The United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a regular scheduled public session of the Woodbridge Board of Education. It is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public laws of 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. This meeting has been approved by resolution adopted at the organization meeting held on January 6, 2025. Notification has been sent to the record. Notification has also been posted in the Woodbridge Borough Hall, the Woodbridge Memorial Library, TapInto.net, and the Woodbridge Board of Education's website. Meetings of the board are open to the public, and all members of the community should feel free to participate. The board announces that under its longstanding policy, it will not discuss in public any comments made by members of the public concerning individual staff members. Before coming to the board, the chain of command should be followed. There are two portions of the meeting reserved for comments made from the public. The first, the beginning of the meeting, for agenda items only, and the second, at the end of the meeting, for other items. Issues raised by the public may or may not be responded to by the board, but all comments will be considered. The board requests that all members of the public be mindful of the rights and other individuals when speaking. Due to the confidentiality, legal rights afforded by the state of New Jersey, members of the public are asked not to speak negatively or in derogatory manner about any employee of the board or any student. Please be advised that all or portion of this meeting is being livestreamed in real time and will be recorded for rebroadcasting at a future date. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Here.
Mr. Garvin?
Here.
Mrs. Milano?
Here.
Mr. Fakiro Zapsen?
Present.
Mr. Nieves?
Present.
All right, first on to our presentation recognitions and awards. We have our Students of Month for April. Lara?
Thank you. Each month, we celebrate different areas of student achievement, of student achievement, and for this past month, the Doyle School was excited to focus on computer science in recognition of our growing emphasis on digital literacy and innovation. Our Students of the Month were nominated and selected based on their outstanding talent, interest, and effort in computer science. We believe that recognizing these young coders and problem solvers not only motivates them to continue developing their skills, but also encourages computational thinking, creativity, and perseverance. Recipients of this honor received a certificate of achievement and also have their photos prominently displayed on our TV near our main office, as well as on our website and social media page. I now present to you our K3 Computer Scientists of the Month. In 3rd grade, Theo Belts. I have never seen this before. I love it. In Grade 2, Meme Janet Tool. In Grade 1, Janay Harry. You can stand next to Theo up there. And in kindergarten, Chloe Kunliff.
Thank you. I don't think I've tried the steps. Hi, everyone. I'm Mrs. Giacamelli, the interim principal at the intermediate school, and it is my pleasure tonight to share with you our amazing artists for the month. Dr. Svet Skova is awarding these exceptionally talented students for their hard work and their dedication to creating great art, and she wants you to keep it up and do great work. So our first 4th grade recipient is Lucas Lopez. Lucas began his educational journey in Woodbridge, attending kindergarten at the Doyle School. Something he's very proud of is that he made high honors this year for three marking periods, and he's hoping that he's going to finish off the same way. I know he will. He's also a three-letter guy. He plays football, basketball, and baseball, and since we're in baseball season, I want to share with you that he's a catcher on the team, and he loves the position. And not only, for him, not only does he just have to sit out in the outfield and wait for a ball to come, he gets to be in every single play. So he's really excited about that. Something else that he shared with me that I didn't know is that he gets excited when he can make a play at home base, at home, I don't think it's a base, plate, and make an out because you're only allowed to steal once time per inning in their league. So that was, did you guys know that? Oh, not me. So that was really interesting. He loves like basketball and football, like I said, and I asked him, well, what's your favorite sport? He said, well, basketball and football, they're, they're tie, they're in first place. And basketball is, is a fun, he loves to watch basketball. He watched the Knicks and with his mom on Sunday, a little disappointment, but he's rooting for them, right? All right. His favorite food, which is chicken cutlets with rice, he says anybody wants them. His dad is a super, super chef and loves to make them. He believes he got his, his talent from Lucas's grandpa, who used to be a chef and now lives in Florida. One of the best vacations he went on was to Cancun, as the hotel had several pools and, and a waterslide, which was awesome, and he was able to visit the Mayan ruins. So he's moving along, this young man. Lucas's favorite subject is math. However, he truly enjoys art because you can be creative. And I'm going to give you the quote that he told me today. All it takes is one idea, and you can have a really great picture. Congratulations. Stay right here. Our second outstanding winner for this month for 5th grade is a sweet young lady, Kate Senuket. She's not, I don't believe I see her here today, but just a really short message about her. Kate arrived to us in Woodbridge in April of 2024 from Ukraine and had no English. And now we have regular conversations. Our program here in Woodbridge is doing really well. One thing that she shared with me is that after every class they have, they have recess. I'm like, oh, that sounds a good idea. All right, so this is for Kate. Congratulations, Kate. I hope you're watching. Our 6th grade winner today as an amazing artist is Yuzuno Yasajima. Come on up, Yuzuno. And Yuzuno has a really interesting story. She came from and lived in Tokyo, Japan. She came here also in April, 24, with her family, and she entered 5th grade. She has two siblings, a sister in 4th grade, Momono, and a brother, a younger brother, I believe his name is right, he's not yet in school. When asked, why did you move here? She stated, because Dad loves the United States and wanted to move the family here. So Yuzuno stated, I love the United States too, and I'm really happy to hear that. Believe it or not, she loves Shake Shack. Oh, my goodness. I looked at her, go, really? A hamburger with fresh lettuce, tomatoes, her favorite. Whereas in Japan, her favorites are sushi and miso soup. As a family, Yuzuno goes to Manhattan. They eat out, they go to Central Park, as well having annual passes to the many events and museums in the city that the city has to offer. Her favorite is MoMA, the Museum of Modern Art. 5th Avenue FAO Schwarz is a favorite during the Christmas holidays. They travel by bus and subway to get around. She enjoys playing basketball and swimming, can often see her riding a bike. Since here, Yuzuno has learned a great deal of English and is always willing to share her thoughts. I even shared with her the many pictures I have from when I visited Japan several years ago. Her face lit up when recognizing the many cultural spots that I had visited, and now the family will probably go back to Tokyo in August to visit family and friends. Congratulations, Yuzuno.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we recognize our April Students of the Month. These outstanding students have been selected by the teachers for demonstrating exceptional dedication, leadership, academic achievement, and positive character throughout the month. They serve as role models to their peers and embody the values of our school community. We are proud of their hard work and the respectful, responsible attitudes they bring to our classrooms and hallways each day. For the 7th grade, we have Gabriela Toxley Hernandez. For the 8th grade, I do not see her here tonight, but we have Mia Fischkelta. For the 9th grade, we have Ava George. For the 10th grade, we have Kaia Majik. Come on up, Sean. For the 11th grade, we have Sean Station. And for our 12th grade, we have Isabella Spina. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, students. And speaking of students, we have our representative report. Clyde?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Clyde Mberto, and I'll be reading the monthly report of May. We kicked off the month of May with our Spring Pep Rally Outdoors. It was a beautiful day filled with celebrations as we honored all our spring sports teams and watched different grade levels compete in fun games against each other. On May 2nd, we held our Senior Commitment to Your Future Day. Our 115 seniors celebrated their future plans with a picnic lunch and a visit from Mr. Softy, sponsored by the Woodbridge PTA. It is always a wonderful experience to see the seniors enjoying themselves while honoring one another's accomplishments. Thank you to PTA and Miss Peniagua for making this event special. Marking period 3 report cards have been released, and students who made the honor roll enjoyed a special breakfast with Mrs. Gucio Ruiz and Mrs. Sinclair last week. Congratulations to all. Our 8th graders traveled to Washington DC last week and returned on Friday evening. They had a great time exploring the nation's capital. Thank you to Mrs. Diaz for coordinating such a memorable trip. Finally, it's prom week. The junior senior prom is this Thursday at the West Mount Country Club with over 200 students attending. We are looking forward to a wonderful night of celebration. Now to the athletic report. Softball is coming off the county tournament blackout week and earned a victory versus Cliffside Park at recreation night. The girls are eager to play some big league games this week, including Beckton and Wellington. Congratulations to Books Talado and Braille Rivera for earning 100 career hits just one day apart from each other. Baseball had a big win over Dwight Englewood in the BIT Bergen County Bracket and will face off against Ridgewood on Saturday at the Rack. They also have a major league game this week as they play Hashbrook Heights on Tuesday at Montclair State University at 7:00 PM and at Beckton on Wednesday. Boys volleyball has an overall record of 10-8 with a win today over Elmwood Park on senior night. They would be playing their final game tomorrow versus Patterson Charter at home. Track and field. Aiden Kelly finished 2nd place in the shot put at the Bergen County Championship and hit a personal record of 49 feet and 6 inches. Aiden is expected to advance the Bergen County Meet of Champs. Malia Irving medaled this past weekend at the Bergen Championship, placing 3rd place. Flag football is currently 3-3, and although they have been hit with many injuries, they continue to play hard. Fiona Helly and Leah Russo have been selected to play in the prestigious Philstons All-Star Game in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Clyde. So usually after we have the presentation of the student of the month, I allow, you know, I give everybody a few minutes, but tonight, we're actually hiring our principal at the intermediate school. So I would ask for the next five or 10 minutes if, before we vote, if you can stick around, and we'll, we'll have some special words from, from her as soon as we're done. So let's move on to our next set of presentations. Mr. Lisa, Student Safety Data Systems Report.
Good evening. Tonight, I'll present to you the data submitted to the New Jersey Department of Education's Student Safety Data System for reporting Period 1 of the 2024-2025 school year. Under the Student Safety Data System, all incidents involving any type of suspension in school or out of school must be reported upon. In addition, any alleged and/or confirmed harassment, intimidation, or bullying, HIVs must be reported. During the first half reporting period of the 24-25 school year, which runs from September 1st through December 31st, 2024, the number of incidents reported to the school safety data system for the district was 17. There were no incidents reported in either the Doyle or Intermediate Schools. So for the 17 reported in high school, they are disaggregated by type as follows. One threat, one confirmed HIV incident, four alleged HIV incidents, which were not founded, and 11 incidents of other, of non-specific types leading to some form of suspension in school or out of school. The total number of HIV incidents investigated within the district during the first half of the 24-25 school year, as mentioned, was five, of which one was founded. All incidents were all investigated within the 10-day required timeframe. This concludes the Student Safety Data System report for reporting Period 1 of the 24-25 school year. I do have another report. This report is in regards to the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment. Earlier in the school year, we presented to the Board of Education at a meeting the scores for our New Jersey School and District Report Card for the 2023-2024 school year as part of the NJDOE Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Self-Assessment. At the time of that report, the data was presented, presented was unofficial data. Since that time, that data has been submitted, reviewed, and approved by the New Jersey Department of Education. It has now been released as part of an official report card, which may be found on our district and school website. So this was actually reported upon earlier in the year. I'm giving the exact same information, but it is now official and is on our website. So as previously reported, the scores presented were based upon what are known as the eight core elements, which consist of the following. Element 1, HIV programs, approaches, or other initiatives. Element 2, training on the Board of Education, approved HIP policy. Element 3, other staff instruction and training programs. Element 4, curriculum and instruction on HIV and related information and skills. Number 5, HIV personnel. Number 6, school-level HIV incident reporting procedures. 7, HIV investigations, and 8, HIV reporting. Within each core element are a series of requirements that each school is scored upon using a rating scale of 0 to 3. 0 indicating the school did not meet requirements, all the way up to 3 indicating that we exceeded the requirements. With a maximum possible score of 78, having met or exceeded all requirements for each area, the scores for each school, which are officially on our website, were as follows. The Doyle School, 54. The Intermediate School, 54. And the Junior-Senior High School, 52. That gives a district score of 53. That's the average of the schools, which indicates that the Woodridge School District has officially met all requirements of the ABR as required by the Department of Education for our 23-24 school year. Unfortunately, I have yet another report, but I'm sure you've heard enough of me tonight, so I'll keep this short. On tonight's agenda, this is my business administrator's report. On tonight's agenda, under Finance, we are pleased to note that our monthly financials for April have been completed, which may be viewed under Finance 2, 3, and 4. Also, as I'm sure all of us are aware, especially our children, the school year is rapidly coming to a close. With that in mind, the business office has already begun end-of-year procedures in order to get us ready for a new school year to come. We look forward to successfully closing out what will be my first school year in the business office and starting out fresh in 2025-26. That is all from me this evening. You're allowed to go.
Thank you, Mr. Lisa. Trustees, any questions, comments, concerns? All right, on to our superintendent report.
Good evening. My report this evening is really about sharing a calendar of year-end events that will take place before our next scheduled board meeting, which will take place on Monday evening, June 16th. During this week, our students in grades 3 through 6 will continue with the New Jersey Student Learning Assessments. Next week, students will be working in grades 3, 7, and 8, and makeups will take place in the closing days of May. Regarding our school calendar, a reminder, Friday, May 23rd is a one-session day prior to Memorial Day, and the schools will then close through Tuesday, the 27th. The schools will reopen on Wednesday, the 28th. As Clyde mentioned earlier, our high school prom is Thursday evening. A reminder that the Borough and all of its community members are invited to the prom showoff starting at 4:30. We're hoping on the front lawn of the school, weather permitting, otherwise it will move indoors into the Lebansky Gymnasium. Our high school senior academic awards will take place on June 10th, 2025, in the Lebansky Gymnasium. Performing arts, our high school choir concert will take place on May 20th, beginning at 6:30 in the auditorium here. Our high school band will be June 3rd at 6:30 here in the auditorium. Our intermediate school choir and band concert will take place on June 4th at 6:30 in the auditorium here. And our Doyle School concert will take place by grade levels on June 11th, starting in the morning and going throughout the day for grades 1, 2, and 3. Field day, Intermediate School will take place on Friday, May 23rd. The Doyle School will take place on Monday, June 9th. Now, this evening, you'll notice numerous names on our agenda. This is the annual meeting where all of our staff are reappointed for the upcoming school year. We do have eight new appointments this evening. We have some transfers of staff, and we're appointing everybody else. But more importantly, this evening, we are going to, I hope, approve and appoint our new principal at the Intermediate School. Mrs. Ryan Ann Guglielmati is with us tonight. Ryan Ann's a graduate of the Woodridge School System and a current resident of the Borough. Received her undergraduate degree from Rider University and a master's degree from Montclair State University. Holds both the elementary and Teacher of the Handicap Teaching Certificate, in addition to holding her administrative certificates, and has taught either Special Ed or 4th grade in the Rutherford School District for almost 20 years. Mrs. Guglielmati was recognized as the 2011 Teacher of the Year in her school building, has served as a new teacher mentor, cooperating teacher, curriculum writer, and has served on numerous professional committees in the Rutherford School District. Additionally, she has served as an executive member of the Rutherford Education Association for the past 15 years. Over 40 applications for this position were received, and I personally interviewed 13 candidates in the first round. A committee of teachers joined me for a second round of six candidates, and an additional committee joined me for a final round of three candidates. We were fortunate to have three very good candidates in our final round, and it's without any sort of reservation that I recommend Mrs. Guglielmati for the board's consideration this evening to become the Intermediate School's fourth principal, following Mr. Reshion, Mr. Lisa, Mrs. Giacamelli, and now Mrs. Guglielmati. There'll be a formal meet and greet established at some point before the end of the current school year, and perhaps Mr. Nieves, after the board takes action, we can have her say a few words. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustees, any comments? All right. Approval of the minutes upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approved minutes of the following meeting public session, April 28th, January 25th. Can I get a first? Mr. Garvin, can I get a second? Mr. Biamanti, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Biamanti?
Yes.
Mr. Nieves?
Yes. Trustees, before I get on to the committee reports, do we have anything for new business? No, no, no. All right, on to our committee reports. Curriculum instruction, we have approval of an evaluation, approval to terminate out of district placement, attend new placement, approval of evaluation request, approval of a field trip request. Onto personnel, we have approval of a personnel appointment, approval of a personnel appointment, which includes Munaki, approval of a reappointment of personnel 25-26 Doyle School non-tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 Doyle School to tenure, approval of a reappointment of personnel 25-26 Doyle School tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 intermediate non-tenured staff, approval of a reappointment of personnel 25-26 Intermediate School tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 at the Junior-Senior High School non-tenured staff, approval of an appointment of personnel 25-26 Junior-Senior High School to tenure staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 Junior-Senior High School tenured staff, approval of a reappointment of personnel 25-26 district-wide non-tenured child study team, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 child study team to tenured staff, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 child study team, tenured staff, approval of reappointment personnel 25-26 district-wide tenured ESL teacher. And we have some more. So approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 non-tenure full-time power professionals, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 non-tenure part-time power professionals, approval of reappointment of personnel 25-26 non-tenure buildings and grounds personnel, approval of reappointment personnel 25-26 part-time nurse, approval of reappointment bus driver 25-26, approval of reappointment of administrative personnel 25-26, approval of reappointment of affiliated, unaffiliated district personnel 25-26, approval of a reappointment of personnel 25-26 treasurer of school monies, approval of reappointment of business administrator board secretary, approval of volunteer coaching appointment, approval of a request for leave of absence, approval of a personnel appointment 24-25 district substitute, resolution to withhold an increment, case 24254007, acceptance of a resignation, and approval of transfer. Onto policy, we have approval of regulations. Buildings and grounds, we have none. Finance, approval of the bills list, approval of the monthly financial report to the board secretary and treasurer, approval of the certification of a balanced budget, approval of budget transfers, and lastly, approval of the acceptance of donation and none for board operations. Before I open it up to the hearing of citizens on the agenda only, comments or questions? All right, I'll open it up to the hearing of citizens. So anybody here, you have any comments or questions, please come up to the podium and give us your name and address. And then your question. No questions, no comments? All right, close the hearing of citizens here. Did we have anything that was coming? All right, I will close the overall hearing of citizens. We're almost there. So trustees, looking for your support, which includes Munaki, the resolutions for curriculum instruction 2 and 3, personnel 2, 8 through 24, 26, 27, and 29, policy and regulations 1, none for buildings and grounds, finance 1 through 4, and none for board operations. Can I get a first? Mr. Fallon, can I get a second? Mrs. Milano, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Biamanti?
Yes.
And Mr. Nieves?
Yes. Trustees, looking for your support, which is Woodridge only, resolutions, curriculum and instruction 1 and 4, personnel 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 25, and 28, none for policy and regulations, none for buildings and grounds, 5 for finance, and none for board operations. Can I get a first? Mr. Garvin, second. Mr. Biamanti, discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Fallon?
Yes.
Mr. Garvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Milano?
Yes.
Mr. Biamanti?
Yes.
And Mr. Nieves?
Yes. All right. Congratulations. We have our new intermediate principal. Would you like to say a few words?
Hi, everyone. First, to Mr. Albro and the board, I am honored for this opportunity, and thank you very much. To the community, this is definitely a full circle moment for any of the old-timer OGs, as we call them in Woodridge. In around 1990, I put on a showstopper, putting on a hit show in this exact auditorium. It's probably on VHS around this town and many places. About 10 years later, I passed driver's ed in this exact room, and I'm a pretty good driver. So so far, my track record of things beginning in this room is strong. I am very grateful for the opportunity to take all I have learned and trained for in the past 20 years. I have loved every moment of being an educator, and I have a sign in my home that says, sometimes the best adventures in life take you home. And for the past 20 years, I have trained and practiced and learned, and I'm excited to be home, and I look forward to working with all of you, and thank you again.
All right. Yeah, hearing of citizens, any comments or questions? Well, congratulations again. I will open it up to the hearing of citizens, anything you'd like to speak about? Going once, going twice, hearing done. Going once, going twice, hearing none, seeing none. Do we have anything posted online? All right, I will close the hearing of citizens. Thank you all. Tonight's meeting is over. Motion to adjourn. Mr. Garvin, Mr. Biamanti, all in favor? All opposed? Have a good night.